All right, welcome everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get this called to order. We're gonna start out with a moment of silence. Commissioner Riznardi?
Stand for the pledge, please.
The Constitution is the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any minutes for approval. I am gonna move one item up at the request of outside counsel. Item J is in Juliette 7, the opioid litigation. I don't know if folks have had a chance to review that, but I would entertain at any point in time a motion to approve the recommended action of our outside counsel, Steve Sharpton here, who is available to speak, should anyone desire.
I make a motion to approve, sir.
And that's option one in your agenda.
Option one in the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Bentley. Okay, so do y'all have that? Perfect. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Take care, Steve. Thank you, sir. Likewise. We'll keep it difficult like this. All right, next up, Commissioner Smith, item Echo 1.
Resolution acknowledging Shane Austin Layman for obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Is he here? Hi Shane. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
I'm gonna read this, and then when I'm finished, we'll give you the speaker podium, and you can say whatever you want. And enlighten us as to how you did this, and how hard it was, and all that good stuff.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. Whereas Shane Austin Layman has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank awarded to a Boy Scout, by completing the demanding requirements of personal development, leadership, and community service. And whereas Shane started Cub Scouts at five years of age, crossed over to Boy Scouts at age 11, earned 30 merit badges, held several leadership positions including senior patrol leader, spent over 50 nights camping, participated in scouting for food, park, and beach cleanups, volunteered his time towards other Scouts Eagle projects, and met his goal of earning Eagle Scout while he was still 15. Whereas, only about 5% of all Boy Scouts earned the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas, as a sophomore at Viera High School, Shane is a member of the Business Academy taking honors and advanced placement classes, maintaining all As every nine weeks since third grade, and plays soccer, practices karate, and is involved in other clubs as well. And whereas Shane's Eagle projects raised over $2,000 in donations, and led 36 adults and youth at the Diamond Square Community Garden in Cocoa, Florida, to clear and update the existing planter beds, build new planter beds, build a new picnic table, and create a 10-by-60-foot garden walkway. And whereas, the lessons learned by obtaining the Eagle Scout rank are important to not only the life of the scout, but also the enhancement of the nation's leadership. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby unanimously recognize and commend Shane Austin Layman for his outstanding efforts in obtaining his Eagle Scout rank through Troop 720, and offers congratulations and best wishes for a successful future. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of January 2020. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve this resolution.
I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. You have the floor, sir.
Just thanks for the recognition and stuff like that. And I'm excited to be part of Scouts, and it's been a dream since I joined Cub Scouts to eventually become Eagle. It's been a long journey, and I think the Eagle Project was really fun, and it taught me a lot of things about how to lead, and just becoming a more strong leader, and more confident in myself, and stuff like that. And it's just been an overall great experience, and I'm really excited to see the garden finally is gonna be open and running for the citizens to be able to grow their own food and stuff, so that'll be very good.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanna say I'm always just amazed with all the young men that hit this level of Eagle Scout. There's not a lot of them, and a lot of our presidents were Eagle Scouts, and I just, I think you're really cool.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to F is in Foxtrot. I'm gonna pull F-11. Would anyone else like something pulled?
I make a motion to approve all but consent except for... For F-11, sir?
All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett to approve consent less F-11.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Riznardi. All in favor of approving consent less F-11? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. So as to F-11, I was actually slow to the draw, Commissioner Smith. I was putting together my P&amp;Z appointees, and I remember you said a couple meetings ago that you needed one. I didn't know whether you'd have them on this agenda or not, so I left mine off to address. I have got, because it looks like you found P&amp;Z appointees, I've got two to appoint for myself, and then also a alternate that I'm gonna appoint that I had available, that if you need it as a full member, that we go ahead and do. One of them is Harry Carswell, who I'd like to appoint. Another is Brian Hodgers. And then for my alternate, Kevin Markey, who's an attorney in Merritt Island, just north of where your district begins. And then beyond that, I did wanna bring up Bruce Moya, who was on the F-11 item here as an appointee for Commissioner Riznardi. I don't have an issue with it, but I do know that he's been on long enough that it would contemplate the term limit that we had recently imposed. So if you'd like, we can certainly approve it notwithstanding that, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. And normally, you know, if Bruce wasn't a value to the board, and if I had a single resident who is interested in that board, because we have had openings on that board even for the alternate, and I had zero response. And the one time we had an appointment, I believe that they ended up leaving because they weren't making the meeting. So it's difficult sometimes to find appointments for boards. There are other boards that people will reach out to you and wanna be on, but again, I believe he brings value, and until someone else expresses an interest, I'd like to keep him on the board.
Fair enough. I'm not gonna argue. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I was willing to vote for all these, however, with checking out some of these appointees, Mr. Smith, two of your appointees potentially have some criminal background issues, and I would be more than willing to, I would be more than willing to vote for all of these short the, your recommendation to P&amp;Z, as well as the Historical Commission, just because of some charges that are pretty serious.
Huh.
And, you know, if you wanted to look at those, or there was more information, certainly that would be okay, but I just, you know, good conscience after doing a brief background check.
Eden, how does that work? Can I look these over before we...
You can pull them from the agenda and bring them back.
Yeah, I'll do that.
And what I'll do as well, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm not gonna ask that we have a motion to appoint my alternate, Kevin Markey, so that you do have one in case you wanna use him. If you don't, and you're satisfied with the choices that you have in the current agenda, I'll just go ahead and add him again as an alternate at the next meeting, just verbally, and do it that way. So what I'll ask for a motion to do is to approve it, less the items that you're pulling that were identified by Commissioner Tabia.
And Eden, can he give me, if I get to that point, and I would like to speak to this, Mr. Markey, can I get the phone number from Commissioner Lobster? Is that a problem?
We'll get it for you.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's, you know, he certainly understands, I already had a conversation with him in person at his office, that he might be your appointee, or my appointee, or no one's appointee, depending on how it works. So he's flexible with it. So again, just to confirm that we're all on the same page as to the ones that I'm asking to have included in the motion, Harry Carswell for P&amp;Z, full member, Brian Hodgers, who's a reappointment, Harry was not, and that I'm not doing anything, not taking any action as to Kevin Markey. We've addressed Mr. Moya. The last item, Commissioner Tabia, pertains to TPO, the Citizens Advisory Committee. I do see that Don Krieger was an alternate for us in D-2, and that you do have a vacancy. I prepared, if you want, and I know maybe it might come across as presumptuous, but just for your convenience, if you wanted to appoint him, I do have an appointment form, so you could appoint him if you wanted to. If you don't, then by all means, you know, don't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be more than willing to look over, but I would want to do the same due diligence I do for everyone else, certainly for an appointee of myself, but I will absolutely give that person full consideration.
And just to avoid any sunshine issues, his number, if you wanna call him afterwards, is 321-724-9542.
I'm sure he appreciates that.
And everyone knows that.
Everyone? All right, so I guess, are we on the same page in terms of what we're moving to do? All right, we're looking good. Excellent.
I would just suggest, maybe just give him all of the information, his office, since you're stating publicly, I guess you're gonna do that, it's probably not a sunshine violation, correct?
Ms. Bentley, can I hand him this?
You can.
Perfect. That'll work. And then if that works as well, I've also got the appointment info from Mr. Markey. I'll go ahead and pass over to Commissioner Smith.
All right.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you both. So if we could have a motion as to F-11 with the changes that have been indicated?
So moved.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, we got through it. So moving right along, public comment. We do have a couple of public comment cards. Mr. Tovey?
Charles Tovey, Melbourne. Glad everybody's safe and sound through the holidays, and Happy New Year to ya. Wanted to make a community motion for a Day of Kindness. If we don't have a day put aside for Day of Kindness, that we could maybe possibly make one for Brevard. Random acts of kindness done anonymously to people anyways. Also, I rescind some of my comment about taxes going up, because I read that Mr. Abate helped assist in lowering the taxes in Merritt Island, and there are no new taxes in Satellite Beach and Indian Harbor. And I don't wanna be... I have a gift, and I speak what I've, I get, I have ideas and thoughts, and I speak in almost prophecy, if you haven't seen it, but I can make a list, and I'll do it another time, a short, because of holidays and things, but I wanted to also include Judge Torpe, he passed away this weekend, Fifth District Court of Appeals, and also for the girl in Satellite Beach that got involved in things. God bless them all, and that's what I was gonna include in my speaking about the speed bumps on Tropical Trail. Had anything had been acted about that, they had another accident, and it was hit-and-run after I just made the statement, and in my man in this book, there's all kinds of speed bumps for several hundred dollars in there. Some of them are temporary, some of them are permanent, and this is what I like to do also with the DIRAs, Designated Environmental Retcharge Areas. They don't have to be permanent, but just have them for a time being until that area, whether it be organic or synthetic construction, until that time heals. And I forgot the other one. Sanctuary County, if we could start recognizing and saving spots for our wildlife, or our animals that nobody cares about, and they're part of us, and part of our continuation, and there is no, just like the black bears, and the black bears, and all the other items are something that we can look forward to, instead of having a problem hit us all at once. There's one other thing I was gonna say, and I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I don't like to break habits if they're positive in my behalf. Oh yeah, the speed bumps, about the springs in my area. There are springs that come out of the ground, they're going to the river, and they're being ignored.
Thank you, sir. I did think you were going a different direction with the Sanctuary County item, so I appreciate the clarification with that. And as to the Day of Kindness, I do know, and I'd have to go back to review the minutes to see exactly what it was that we addressed in the resolution. We had an elementary school that was in my district that had a kindness symbol that we approved as Brevard County's official kindness symbol. I don't know if we tied that to a particular day or date, but I've gotta take a look at that. I don't recall one way or the other, but that is a good idea. Thank you. Next up, we have Peter Carnsdale from Melbourne. And then that's our last card for public comment. Welcome, sir.
Okay, my name is Pete Conisal. I'm from 1910 Independence Avenue. I live in Indian River Colony, but I do not represent them, I represent me. Okay? Basically, I have two items. One is, we're still searching for that turn lane going into Viera Boulevard as you're headed east. It's an accident waiting to happen, basically, and it has nothing to do with how much traffic or how little traffic goes through that area. All right? Basically, you have a lane that is now a through lane, where the people now have to stop or almost stop, because as they come around that bend, they cannot see until they reach the corner. And therefore, they're coming to basically 5 miles an hour or less in a 40 mile an hour area, and sooner or later, someone will rear-end them. It's just a matter of time. So again, I requen, you know, regardless of what we're doing in terms of numbers of cars, it doesn't make any difference. It could be 10 cars or 80 cars, the opportunity for the hit is still there. All right? The other piece basically is golf cart crossing, going over 95. All right? Right now, we have, I don't know how many people on the east side of 95 that basically go to the schools that are on the west side of 95. All right? And if you look in their parking lot, they're filled with golf carts. Yet, there is not a single road that they're allowed to use to get there. All right? Basically, the law now states that they cannot use Murrell, they cannot use Viera Boulevard, they cannot use, any road that has a 40 mile per hour speed limit or more, okay, is illegal for a golf cart to use. All right? So they have no way of getting to school. All right? What's happening now basically is, parents are driving them and getting them there, but it's putting a lot of people out of whack, while one half of the neighborhood is allowed, and the other half of the neighborhood is not allowed, in terms of the access. And it should be either all or none, in terms of, either you can use golf carts to get to school, or you can't use golf carts to get to school. It shouldn't be, some people can and some people can't. Where you were talking about going the wrong way, I think with the Sanctuary County, is I think somebody, you were probably thinking in terms of the gun control, okay? I'm not gonna bring that up, however, I think that that's where your mind was going.
No comment.
All right. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna cover that as far as going into any detail.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any kind of an update, Mr. Abate, as to the letter that went out to DOT regarding the crosswalks on that diverging diamond interchange, or the overpass? Did we hear anything back from them yet?
We did receive a response from DOT. They basically rejected the suggestion that we made about one way on one side and one way on the other side for golf carts, and which frankly, we expected that, but that is, they did respond that way. They had a couple other suggestions in there that we might consider, but by and large, as far as they're concerned, it's not a permissible situation.
Thank you, Mr. Denningoff. All right, that's all we have for public comments, so we're gonna move on to public hearings. H is in Hotel 1, adoption of an animal abuse registry ordinance. I'll go ahead and address a couple things, and then I know Ms. Bentley had a comment based on a concern that was brought to her attention, frankly, by my office. With respect to this, I think that when I phrase this as a registry, I probably did folks a disservice in doing that, and I really should've called this a database. A registry might suggest to folks that there's a requirement that someone register. This is simply automatic, so it's not putting any burden insofar as registration is concerned. I did get, starting yesterday in the afternoon, going into the evening for the first time, not just one, but a slew of emails opposing this. I presume that all of the emails that I got were sent, maybe with a name change and the salutation, to all of the other commissioners. I don't know that, but at least 13 of them that I saw were literally copied and pasted, complete with the same grammatical imperfections, with nothing other than the name, the address, city-state, and zip being changed. And I did wanna address, and I passed out just before this item was called up, to my colleagues up here, and the clerk had a copy that was sent earlier today by email, so that it's ADA accessible in PDF format. Some of the comments that I have with respect to this, I'm not gonna go through absolutely everything, unless someone wants me to, but essentially, there were two distinct emails that were received, despite the number of people that sent the same thing. This is one of them. The other, if folks have concerns about, I'm happy to address, but if it looks like I have support anyway, I'll save everyone the time. This one talks about, and I'm just gonna read their part, and then read my commentary with respect to it. These came from folks that were residents, some of my district, some of other folks' districts, urging the commissioners to vote no on the proposal to establish a local animal abuser registry. And it starts out by saying, "I'm an animal lover and want Brevard County to do everything it can to prevent animal cruelty, however..." And the comment that I made with this, and I apologize if it comes across as facetious at all, but it sounds exactly like something that folks would say prior to saying something anti-Second Amendment, saying that they support the Second Amendment. Everything that follows the statement, that they're animal lovers and want the county to do everything possible to prevent animal cruelty, everything following that is incompatible with that qualifier. It talks about the cost to set up and maintain an animal abuse registry, and that that would be a wasted investment. Nearly all of the remotely difficult IT work, and I know Jeff McKnight's here, if anyone has a question or doubts this, it's already been done, and most of it, we certainly had a little bit done on our side, but most of it has been done frankly, as a pro bono goodwill public outreach gesture from the clerk's office. It's done. There's no cost to incur. We didn't have a cost with that. They did it as a courtesy to me. So therefore, the cost at this point would be de minimis. I would say it's probably gonna be under 100 bucks, and that's on the high end at this point. So the cost to maintain it, since the email talked about maintenance as well, is negligible. I say that because exploitation of the update data is gonna be done programmatically, with exceedingly little human involvement. So the programming to do that is already in place at the clerk's office. They did it for free as a courtesy, which is excellent on their part, and I respect that, and I applaud them. Our counting IT has already confirmed to me that the format will work for them, so that all the records can be updated in batch programmatically. So it's not that someone has a case, and a human being has to do anything with respect to that, that they otherwise wouldn't be doing. The letter goes on, it talks about particularly when a registry would likely have the unintended consequence of leaving animals more vulnerable to abuse. All I can say with respect to that is that speculation that's totally unsupported by the facts. And it goes on, and it says, "For example, by imposing the punishment of registry listing on offenders, the proposal could have the effect of encouraging prosecutors and courts, who often see registry listings as an additional punishment, to reduce or dismiss cruelty charges resulting in fewer convicted abusers. It could also set a precedent that may lead to fewer prosecutions of animal cruelty in other areas as well." That is wrong on all counts, and in every possible respect. As to the proposition that courts, namely judges, the judiciary, would reduce or dismiss charges either directly, or for that matter indirectly, on account of the implementation of this registry or really database, it's simply false. The courts, the judges, the judiciary do not have any discretion whatsoever to do any such thing. I've taught criminal litigation at an ABA-approved program. I've had almost a decade of experience practicing law in this county. All of that tells me that that's, it's not something that's even theoretically possible. It's absolutely 100% wrong. In fact, the judge that would do that, or could do that, not only could, likely would be disciplined by the state for doing that. There is no mechanism for a judge to reduce or dismiss charges on account of the registry, as there's no lawful mechanism that permits it. It's simply not something that exists. And as to the proposition that the prosecutors, the State Attorney's Office in this part, would potentially take a similar act, our duly-elected state attorney advised me in writing, impertinent part as follows, and I'm gonna quote him here. "I received your email regarding the suggestions made by many persons contacting you, that being added to an animal abuser database or registry would somehow negatively influence our prosecution of animal cruelty cases. I can assure you that is not going to happen." He went on to add that the existence of the registry is not going to have any impact on his filing decisions, and he added, and I'm gonna quote this part as well, "In addition, if someone is already on that database or registry and commits a new offense, we would most certainly consider that as a reason to request a more harsh sentence upon conviction for the new offense." So the reality is that we're really dealing with the opposite of what's being suggested in this copy and paste chain email. Email goes on and says, "There are other far better ways for Brevard County to allocate its limited resources to prevent animal cruelty, such as including pets and orders for protection, and allotting funds toward better enforcement of no-contact orders." It's wrong again. I mean, if you tried to get everything wrong, you did a good job in putting this email together. I think it was, quite frankly, put together by someone out of state, as best I can tell, but neither here nor there. It's up to the judiciary, not the Board of County Commissioners, to determine whether to include pets and injunctions, as we already have permitted by laws that were enacted by our state legislature. We already have provided a tremendous increase in funding to the sheriff's office, in large part to increase the number of patrol or road deputies that are out there on the streets. So that will serve to allow for better enforcement of no-contact orders, regardless of what's contained within the order. The implementation of the registry isn't mutually exclusive with anything that was suggested, and it does absolutely nothing to preclude any other act or actions which might serve to disincentivize animal abuse. So in short, there's absolutely nothing that was correct in this email. I do believe that the folks that sent it were probably well-intentioned. I think it's unfortunate that they relied on incorrect information from someone who may have a political motivation that's beyond my knowledge or care to speculate, to put something like this together. As to the other email that we got from the ASPCA, I think some of the concerns were addressed in this email. The only other thing in the interest of time, unless it doesn't look like I'm gonna have support for this, in which case I can rebut it point by point, is they talk about a prohibitive cost in the hundreds of thousands. I think there was an article that went up on one of the local TV stations saying 200,000, there was something else, I think, that may have said half a million. They are not just off by a multiple, they're off exponentially. It's not, we're dealing with probably something in the magnitude of 1/1,000th of the cost of what they're suggesting, probably on a bad day. So the resources that we're talking about truly are negligible for the folks that have had occasion to talk to, either our IT or the clerk's IT folks. I think everyone is on the same page with respect to this being de minimis in terms of an additional burden on the county. So with respect to that, I do know that we have Joe Hellebrand, who's Director of Animal Services for BCSO. He came at my invitation, I certainly appreciate that, to be available to answer any questions that folks may have. Also, Teresa Clifton has come out, and she did put in a speaker card. She is actually the only speaker card here, so if you wanna come out and chime in, whatever you'd like, I'll certainly be happy to hear from you. Please.
Sorry, I'm late.
No, don't worry, you're perfect.
Oh, you guys are moving fast today. I'm Teresa Clifton, and I'm the Executive Director of the Brevard Humane Society, and I would like to point out to you that this registry also is going to, would be, a resource for animal shelters, not just for the county shelter, but also for the other two animal shelters in Brevard County, and also for people who are breeding, and legally breeding, and adopting out animals, for rescues. To have one resource that we could go to, to look and see, is, it's just, it would be a goldmine for those of us that are in this field. I don't have a wherewithal when it comes to doing the, taking care of, you know, people that are mistreating. that are mistreating, that I'll leave up to the professionals that are into that. But for the situation from where we're standing as an animal shelter, people that come to us, we take them for their word, and we do have access to look out on the court system for public record to see if people have been convicted of animal abuse or not. But amongst ourselves, the animal shelters, the SPCA in Titusville, us in Cocoa, we share information with each other about incidents that happen within our own organizations that may not necessarily be something that you could prosecute someone for, but it's animal abuse just the same. I mean, we just had a dog named Daisy that we, somebody found on the side of the road, and we'll never know who did that. But at least we would have some ability with people that are having issues with animals that we would have a place that we could go to to utilize. We share, even with the county animal shelter, we all share information as much as we can. But if we had one place that we could go to look at, that would just be so much more beneficial to our community as a whole. Therefore, that's why I am very much for the registry. There are several other counties in Florida that already have it, and they, it works quite well for them. And so I encourage you, speaking strictly for the animals in our community, who also y'all represent, to please consider doing this for them, because they deserve to be seen as well, and to have somebody speak for them. And that animal abuse registry, the ordinance, would at least give us something to go by to be able to help them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Teresa. It's great to see, see and hear from you, as always.
Little passionate about it, sorry.
No, you and me both. I'll tell you, my wife doesn't normally get involved in anything political that I have going on up here. And she made the comment to me the other day. She said, "You know, my dog's name is Winks." She said, "You know, Winks would be proud of what you're doing." And that's actually probably the best compliment I've ever gotten for anything I've done up here. So with that said, like I said, I'm happy to address any concerns anyone has. If it looks like we have support, though, to push this through, then I'm happy to, you know, to have a motion and entertain that, however folks want to deal with it, truly. Commissioner Pritchett?
You made all the changes, and I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Oh, actually, you know what? I apologize before you do that, Ms. Bentley. Getting ahead of myself.
A practical problem arose in the last day from the clerk's office, and they were concerned about having to review convictions to determine if they addressed livestock. It would be very easy to fix that problem. If you go to page two of your ordinance, there's a definition of animal. And it says, "Animal shall mean any living dumb creature as provided for in Section 828.27 Florida statutes, as may be amended." If you stop the sentence there and strike, "However, such definition shall exclude livestock as defined in this section," that would solve that problem. And logically, you would also remove the definition of livestock, if you want to. I don't, I don't know how serious a problem that is. They just raised it as a possible complication for them.
Ms. Bentley?
Appreciate that.
Did they mention, I, well, I don't know that I've heard of any livestock cases either.
I don't know of any, but I-
I see Joe Hellebrand shaking his head in the negative. It also strikes me as something that would be exceedingly infrequent. I've never come across something like that, despite having practiced a good amount of criminal defense in the county over a period of years.
Okay, Ms. Bentley, is that the only recommendation you had?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I make a motion to approve it with Ms. Bentley's recommendation.
And I'll go ahead and second it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Smith in the negative. Moving right along, J is in Juliet 1. This deals with the non-precision approach at Valkyria Airport. I'm happy to accept the motion with respect to this, or we can go through and have staff identify it. Commissioner Tabai, it is in your district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to approve and want to thank the Kahler family for their generous donation when it comes to accepting a lower value for this land.
All right, wonderful. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving right along, Ms. Bentley, you are up for J is in Juliet 2 regarding the executive session with Scott Ellis.
This is a request for permission to advertise for an executive session to discuss the case of Ellis versus Brevard County on the charter cap.
I make a motion for that.
Commissioner Tabai, I see you have a light here. Is that the old light, or?
It's a new light.
New light. All right, what have you got, sir?
Thank you. I've got a couple of things on this item, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Normally, when a private party sues us, the public has an interest in entering into this private executive session, because we would be discussing strategies to protect their funds, often, many times, against these illegitimate claims. However, this case is distinguishable from those kinds of cases, because this is a case brought by an office of a government charged with ensuring financial responsibility and involves purely a question of law. This case is simply about how to interpret, you know, our charter. So I don't, I think anything that we do to discuss this should certainly be done in front of citizens, as they're on either side of this. And as we move forward, I think this litigation could be, could be timely. I mean, sorry, would not be timely, could be extremely drawn out, could be expensive. So I certainly would, you know, entertain, I know this isn't here, and I know we may want to wait, but I certainly would like to make a motion to direct the county attorney's office to enter settlement with the clerk, accepting his interpretation of the charter cap in future fiscal years. This, again, would potentially save legal fees. It would be a heck of a lot easier for budgeting in the future. Last time we tangled with the county, with that county office, I believe we ended up on the short end of the stick. And to put things very nice, they have a wonderful attorney on their side who-
A beautiful one as well.
Yeah, yes, intelligent, and so-
That's my wife, in case anyone thinks I'm making a misogynistic comment.
So I would like to, first of all, make a motion for the county attorney to enter settlement agreement on the clerk's interpretation.
I'm happy to entertain the motion, but before we do, I believe we had a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, the second from Commissioner Riznardi on this. Did we have a motion in a second on this already, to approve the item as listed?
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and vote on the existing motion, if we may. All right, all in favor?
Are we still discussing this motion?
If you'd like.
I mean-
We can continue to discuss it if you'd like.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Can I ask the county attorney a quick question?
Absolutely.
So if this was to go through and we made a motion for, to enter executive session, would that preclude discussion of entering a settlement agreement? Are those mutually exclusive?
Well, we could go ahead and start discussing settlement and bring it to you at the executive session. The executive session can't be held until the 21st. Am I understanding your question?
If we made, if we made a motion to go to executive session, the idea was, my understanding would be all future discussion would be held in private.
Correct.
However, I would be making a motion, the one that I just made, to ask you to enter into a settlement agreement with the clerk of the court's interpretation. So would I be violating that?
Well, if the full board voted to go that route, you might not need an executive session in the end.
So it would, I still could bring up that motion, is-
Later at the executive session, or later you could, sure.
Just to interject real briefly, and again, I may have misheard something, but I may have to disagree with you, at least in your interpretation of all future discussion on this item being confidential. My interpretation with this is only the discussion we have during that notice, as it will be-
That's what I meant, yes.
In short order, during that will be, will be confidential. If you want to discuss settlement outside of that, we can do it today, we can do it, you know, the next time we have a meeting. I don't have any issue with that.
Okay, I was an attorney.
I don't disagree.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page, because I didn't want there to be confusion on that front. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, although I have great respect for Mr. Ellis, I also have great respect for our legal team here. And there's a definite beating of difference of opinions. And so I, and here's the thing, we're being sued. And when we're sued, we need to come together and hear all the information so that we understand exactly what's going on. I'm not a lawyer. So those sessions are very important for me, because I'm protecting tax dollars on both sides of it. So I just think that we need to do it. This obviously has something to do with the sheriff's budget and the supermajority. So this is something that I think that we need to do diligence and come together and have that discussion. Not that it doesn't come out completely in front of the public when we're done. It's, it all comes, you know, forthwith what we think we need to move forthwith. But I think as far as legal strategy, it's definitely something we should do, because that's what we're appointed to do.
And I'll, seeing no further lights, I'll go ahead and jump in at this point. Obviously, not to slight either Mr. Ellis or his legal counsel by any means. I do agree that he has had considerable success with respect to going after the county in the past, when there've been concerns on his front. Obviously, blue origin and the bond validation was the one I think everyone's thinking of. I can tell you that I wasn't on the county commission at that time. I did agree with him on that particular item that he was in the right. Not to say that every time I have an opinion, it's automatically the right one. I know my wife would disagree with that pretty profoundly. But with respect to this, I respect Scott immensely. I don't agree with his interpretation of what the governing law means. In essence, and I'm not going to get too far into this today, given that we're going to have an executive session, it seems like, or at least that's one of the possibilities here. The question, I think, really comes down to what the meaning of the finding of critical need being valid for only one year is. My personal belief, in having read it and having looked at it and trying to follow it in accordance with standard statutory interpretation, is that that means that the finding itself is only valid for one year. That, to me, is just a normal reading of it. So for instance, if we went on to this coming year's budget, the baseline would be whatever the baseline was established, based on what we've done the prior year. It doesn't mean that we would have to go through again to have the same vote that we did in order to keep that baseline. What I read that to mean is, if the sheriff wanted a 4.5% raise this coming year, that we would have to find a critical need again, because the preceding critical need finding only applied to the changes that were made when that critical need was found. That, in a nutshell, is the most simplistic way that I can phrase the dispute. I respect him. I think there's an argument on his part. I don't think that either side is doing anything frivolous by any means. In the end, it's going to be decided in all likelihood by what a judge wants to do in a declaratory action. And it'll be what it'll be. And whoever is right is going to be determined by the court. So we can have great arguments, he can have great arguments. But the fact is, it's going to be a court in the end that determines. Commissioner Riznardi?
I'm all for doing this in the public, but when we were served with the lawsuit, that wasn't done in the public, nor was it done, you know, for the world to see. So we received it by legal. I think we need to at least look at where we stand legally and then make a decision from there. But I'm happy to make sure that all the information is in the public, you know, whether it be us making the justification of the critical need, us and our role as elected people in the community, is that our decision to make, which I believe that it is. But I'm not going to argue the case up here. But if we wanted this in the public, this should have been a discussion we had in the public before we were served with a lawsuit. Because I think Mr. Ellis is brilliant, and I consider him a dear friend, and I think he's done a lot as a good watchdog of tax dollars. And he's been things that I've bounced issues off of. But this wasn't discussed with me before the lawsuit was filed. So I'm happy to go to executive session to at least find out where we stand first.
Fair enough. Seeing no further lights, let's go ahead and, I'm going to go call the question with this. So all in favor, not of Commissioner Tabai's motion, which hasn't yet received the second, but as to the original motion from Commissioner Pritchett, as seconded by Commissioner Riznardi?
Aye.
Are we, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tabai in the negative. So as to Commissioner Tabai's motion, I see you have a new light. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's clear that the board is looking at discussing this outside the prying eye of the public, at least. I know when Mr. Ellis had mentioned this, he'd mentioned it at least a couple of times in the Florida Today that he would seek legal action. I don't know how he would provide us with the suit in a more public fashion than the way he did. I certainly was given the heads up when in his conversations, I guess, with the newspaper. It's, it doesn't matter where I stand on this. Clearly, I'm not on the side of the board on this one as we move forward. But I think this puts Ms. Bentley in a very difficult position if I'm to move forward with this. So that being said, I hope that the county attorney's office provides us with an option as we move forward. As a settlement, as I think that will save taxpayers money and undo legal fees that may arise with outside counsel, both on the clerk's office, not only our office, but anyone that is potentially interested in that, whether that be the sheriff's outside counsel or anything like that, not to mention costs that would be incurred for legal action. So that being said, I will pull this, but I hope that we see that as an option moving forward.
Commissioner Riznardi?
I'll just say that typically when we're sued, we don't litigate or discuss legal strategy in public, ever, because of the express interest in protecting county tax dollars. Whether you agree with whether or not this commission voted to approve the critical needs increase, doesn't matter. With the legal direction we were given, or at least we weren't told otherwise that we couldn't do that, then we have no choice but to protect ourselves, no matter who's suing us, whether it be the clerk's office or the public, it doesn't matter. But we would be doing a disservice if we discuss legal strategy out in the public when it's going to cost us money on both fronts. So again, I think that's silly, it's a silly argument to make and kind of reckless, in my opinion. And as far as using Florida Today as a source for news, that's probably a discussion for another day, but I don't always believe everything I read in the newspaper. I'll just say that.
Fair enough. Commissioner Pritchett?
Not that we don't, not that we don't love you, Mr. Berman. Again, we're being sued. This is something we need to have a discussion on. This is even for something we've done, it's something that's in the future that we might or might not even do. So I think we need to be good commissioners and sit together and have a discussion with legal and find out what the strategy is, because we're talking about billions of tax dollars, so.
Commissioner Tabai?
And this is probably my fault, so I apologize, but I don't think the point was, when we enter executive session, it's usually the county versus an individual. So the taxpayers generally are on one side, not the other, during that individual, this individual or a business or something like that. This is county taxpayers versus county taxpayers. In other words, there is going to be a loser here, and no matter which side, with legal fees and court costs and all the stuff, the taxpayers are going to end up, no matter how this ends up. And I think that, in fairness to all the constituents that may want to pay attention to this, on either side, it should be done in public. So this is completely different, absolutely abjectly different than any other executive session, which I've always supported, when it's Brevard County versus XYZ Business or Brevard County versus ABC Citizen. This is a government entity that gives, that receives money from taxes versus another government entity that receives money from taxes. So either way, this is 100% different than everything else, and that's why I think it, again, this passed the other way, should be done open. But again, I, if I wasn't clear, I also wanted to pull the motion, because I think that just puts everyone up here and the legal staff in a tough position.
Understood, sir. And then, you know, I'm happy to call on Commissioner Riznardi next, but I think we're perhaps venturing on the circular realm with the discussion. So with that said, whatever final thoughts you have, Commissioner Riznardi?
I'll just say this, it doesn't matter. It's one constitutional office suing us as a county on a decision that we made based on legal advice that we received. And nothing, nothing at all is going to be hidden from the public, because even in executive session, it still comes out in the wash. Because we may go to executive session and find out that we were given bad legal advice or to move forward, or that something happened, we weren't given the right information, or that an expert tells us that we need to settle. But I think that in the interest of protecting the county, this is, this is how we should move forward. So to suggest that we would want to hide anything from the public is disingenuous and just crazy.
Very briefly, Commissioner Tabai, truly last thoughts.
Yeah, and no, this is a question for the county attorney's office. How long, how long does it take before that- How long does it take before that executive session, the minutes of that executive session would be public to?
When the case is resolved, the executive session is public.
And I have no idea how long, what your guess is?
Months. At least months, possibly a year or two, depending on appeals.
Thank you.
Depending on which route you choose.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, I've already reached out to one of the supervisors, not my wife, at Scott Ellis' office to express my concern about either side appealing this, depending upon the outcome. And I asked that that be communicated to Scott. So, I'm happy to have a conversation with him, although in all fairness, I don't know that I've mentioned it to him specifically directly. So, I think that's something that we may want to think about in advance, what we want to do regardless of how this pans out. All right. So, moving along, since there's no further action we need to take with respect to that, Jay's and Juliet three. I think everyone has had a chance to review the item. Obviously, the crux of this is that we've had a tremendous increase in the number of public records requests, and we're spending taxpayer dollars, as our policies are currently written, to benefit only a small handful of individuals relative to the taxpayers with their particular request. So, essentially, what this seeks to do is to get as close to neutral the county's expenses as we possibly can in dealing with these. I'm not looking for the county or anyone dealing with this to make a penny. I just want to prevent us from losing any money in dealing with these requests. All of the items that are in here, I know the county attorney's had a chance to review. She had some suggested edits that I'm perfectly happy incorporating in totality. If she wants to go ahead, Ms. Bentley, if you want to address those, if someone wants to make a motion to pass this with all of them included, I certainly will support it if there needs to be discussion. I'm happy to have the discussion, but Ms. Bentley, you have the floor.
Thank you. On page two of the agenda, there's a section discussing cumulative requests. And under the second circle there, it's indicia of a request being cumulative. We'd like to ask that the board add a statement that says, "The application of the indicia of a request being cumulative shall be applied only insofar as is allowed by existing law." As to new records, we'd like to ask that a clause be inserted where it says, "Include language within AO47 and BCC22."
This is page three?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I moved to page three, yes. And it says, this is AO47 and BCC22. New records, that paragraph, if we could just insert, "Except where required by law, the staff and custodians shall not create new records." We have some computer programs that would require us to create records that normally wouldn't be created, but software requires us to do it that way. So, there are a few exceptions to that particular rule.
Was that it, or was there a third one?
That was just the two.
Perfect. Okay, if there needs to be any discussion, I'm happy to have it. Otherwise, if someone wants to make a motion, I will very happily second it. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all your work on this.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions about the fees. Have you looked into whether or not, we have a blended fee right now? And the last policy I saw, apparently, there's been some changes here. Are we sticking with that blended fee, or are we going for the cost of the individual that collected? Has that been amended since the?
It's, what's being proposed here is the cost of the individual that's actually fulfilling the request, inclusive of their benefits, because we have a cost to pay their benefits. So, this is the salary plus benefits.
Do you see any, there are three people in an office, a manager, a director, and a temp, and all three could potentially fulfill that request. Do you see any issues with the county potentially, or the department potentially, giving the director or whoever the highest rate to make those records that much more expensive for the individual that wants to receive them?
Nothing in this would cause that to be in place. My understanding is our existing policies suggest the opposite, that it really needs to be the lowest paid employee or the lowest compensated employee that's capable of handling the request. If you have a temp that's simply not able to handle the request, that's a different matter, and it will be bumped up to the next highest, or I should say, the next lowest level that's able to actually process that. But no, that's not what I'm trying to do. And then, Ms. Bentley, if you want to jump in, if you have a different understanding or the same understanding, it might be helpful.
I think you stated it clearly. You can't manipulate the system to increase the cost. You must go with the lowest employee, lowest paid employee.
And that's all, I mean, that's, I think, all anyone's looking for.
Do we know if that will increase the current cost or decrease the current cost that we're charging?
In some circumstances, I can tell you it will increase it. I can't tell you that it's going to be an increase around the board. It's going to be dependent on what those particular individuals make. But I can tell you, I am aware of some where it would increase it. I can't say that as a blanket statement, though.
And you're not worried that that potentially will cause less individuals to seek record and thus, you know, decreasing transparency in government?
I don't think it's going to decrease transparency by any means. There's a difference between bulk records that require a tremendous amount of time to be processed and to be produced, and folks that are, most of the records, to my understanding, and Ms. Bentley can speak to this better than I can, most records requests are somewhat narrow, where this would have a minimal impact. But the big records requests where you may be dealing with thousands of pages, that's where I see this having more of an impact on the requesters. But for small requests, it shouldn't have a profound impact by any means.
And are we still switching the gratis portion from 30 minutes down to 15?
Yes. And again, I think, I think the thing to keep in mind is, we're not doing this in any way to make money. We're trying to stem our hemorrhaging money. If someone's bleeding, you put pressure on it so they don't bleed as much. I know that, Commissioner Isnardi can tell us more about that. But again, yes, and I can tell you, there is case law that I've looked at, that I've spoken with Ms. Bentley about as well, that indicates objectively, at least at the District Court of Appeal, and maybe, she may be aware of a Supreme Court-level case, that indicates 15 is hunky-dory by all counts. There've been at least a couple cases that I've seen that are very unambiguous, that 15 is fine. Less than 15 may or may not be fine. I don't know. I haven't seen case law on it.
Okay. Follow-up, please. Can you help explain, you said bleed, and I see in the legislative, or the summary here you have, that we have an increase of 62% between 2016 and 2019?
It may actually be a little higher than 62. I think that was as the time this was originally drafted, at the end of this past year, so it might even be a little bit more.
Is that the number of requests or the amount of time that has gone into these requests?
Number of requests.
So, is it fair to say that potentially the amount of time could have decreased through technology, yet the number has increased?
I can't tell you to a certainty that's not the case, although I would tell you all else equal, it would appear unlikely that that's the case.
You mentioned hemorrhaging money. Do you know how much, how much this is, I didn't see that here, what the cost to fulfill these requests was above the amount that was collected?
I thought about putting that together, and then I realized the man-hours that would be involved in even calculating that would be a waste of taxpayer funds.
So, hemorrhaging may be a small number?
It's all relative. I mean, to say a small or large, it's all relative. And I think when you look at the trend and you see that the trend is going a certain direction, it's important to try to get ahead of that curve before it really gets out of control.
The trend also, I could be interpreted that more people are interested in funding information about government. That's the trend that I took. Help me with the subsequent?
Yes, sir.
Follow-ups here. It looks like you're interested, if there's a follow-up, that eating into the 15 minutes. Is that?
Yeah, let me, and I want to be careful what I say, because until this is enacted, I don't want to expose loopholes that the county has that would cause people to abuse our staff and make use of them in a way that really isn't contemplated, I think, by any folks that originally put the policies in place that are in place. But what I can tell you, at some degree of risk, without going through each and every loophole, if you had, let's say, let's say that you live on Main Street, and you live at 500 Main Street, and Main Street goes from 1 Main Street to 1,000 Main Street, if they send a public records request to us for any kind of record, it doesn't matter, a record about the sewage system on that street, and they get a response saying it's going to be X number of dollars, and they want to get it for free, they could come back, and I believe that this is a real concern, as things have been narrowed in order to avoid paying, where it could be piecemealed, where they can say, okay, I don't need 1 through 1,000. Let me make a new records request, and I say new with air quotes. I want 1 through 100. Okay, now I want 101 through 200. Now I want 201 through 300. Each is a separate public records request, so that they don't go either over that 30 minutes is in place now, or 15, as I propose, or alternatively, so that even if they do go over it, they still have 15 comped or 30 comped, as it is now, again and again and again and again, which is at the expense of other things that we could be doing with the funds, or potentially not raising taxes, or potentially lowering taxes.
Don't you believe that the very bad apples you speak of are the very folks that understand the loopholes? In your example, couldn't Adam A. Smith ask for Main Street 1 through 101, Adam B. Smith, 102 through 190, or 201, Adam C. Smith, and thus, I mean, this seems not like a hidden loophole, this seems like a very glaring one.
Right, and that's why I mentioned that one in particular. Again, I don't want to, it's the same thing with security, with our IT department. There's certain things I don't think need to be discussed on the record, as far as the loopholes and the potential concerns that exist. What I can tell you is, yes, there are some loopholes that are much more obvious than others. I do think that you're going to get a segment of the population, hopefully a small segment, that seek to take advantage of those loopholes. But I think that having those loopholes available and not patching them is a mistake, especially seeing the trend with the numbers increasing and increasing. I appreciate your concern, and I think what it comes down to is a balance between transparency and also being fiscally conservative and not wasting the taxpayer funds. You know, obviously, there is a subjective evaluation that takes place in each of our minds as to what the appropriate way to go with this is. I think there is a balance, certainly in what exists now and what I'm proposing. The question is, is it the right balance? It's totally subjective question.
And I appreciate all the work that went into this, and I think that we would be sacrificing transparency without a dollar figure. If this, you know, saves millions and millions and millions of dollars, you mentioned hemorrhaging, that would be something I would potentially look at. But we will, without a doubt, be sacrificing transparency for a number that we don't have. So, until that number, you know, comes forward, I just don't think that I will be supporting this, but I greatly appreciate the time and the effort that you put in this.
And I appreciate your concerns as well with respect to it. So, Commissioner Smith, I believe you had a motion that you were starting to make?
Yes. I was in high school. I was in high school when I made it, so I'm trying to remember.
Are you college now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been a while. Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve.
All right. I'll go ahead and second it. Seeing no further lights, let's go ahead and call the question. All in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Passes 3-2 with Commissioners Isnardi and Tobias in the negative. Moving along to J. 4. Ms. Bentley, would you like to present this one?
J. 4 is the succession plan for the county attorney's office. The issue of transition for various offices was raised in a newspaper article a couple months ago. And I've summarized the steps underway in the county attorney's office to let you know that we are trying to be ready for a transition in a couple of years. My goal is to provide the board with maximum flexibility so that you can hire an external candidate, or if someone's available internally, and have a smooth transition either way. If you would like me to take additional steps or a different approach, I'd be happy to do whatever you direct.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Pritchett?
My hope would be that any department heads and the county's already training staff so that we don't have single points of failure regardless. But when these items come up, we've already had to work through an attorney and a manager here. I think we're kind of already doing that process, and if we're not, we probably need to step up our game. But I think y'all are doing that, because there's probably a very strong opportunity at that time to go out and find someone and bring them in also. So, I want to just go ahead and keep all that open and not promise somebody even in house you're going to be moving up, because when we come to replace these positions, I want the very best we can get for the county.
And I'll jump on here, seeing no further lights. I appreciate this item being added to the agenda. What I can tell you, as someone that's followed this process in the past, when it's taken place, even outside of the organization, one of the things that comes to my mind in the agenda item is, on the second paragraph, the portion of the perens where it talks about it may take months to secure and employ a suitable candidate, I think that's a very true statement. I'm not opposed, down the road, to bringing someone onboard in-house or potentially advertising it. I don't think that we need to spend the amount of money that I understand we spent the last time in advertising it, because I think that the folks that are potentially interested can be reached for far less money. But that said, I do think that, given the amount of litigation that has been going on, given the new litigation that we seem to be coming across left and right for various reasons, that it might not be a bad idea to allow Jerry Visco and HR to work, to put together some proposals in terms of how a transition would work. What I can tell you, to step back a moment, to the concern that I have with respect to the amount of litigation that we're dealing with, I don't have, I shouldn't say I don't have a problem with, I think it would be very wise, and I certainly would support having a lengthier-than-usual transition time where we have whichever candidate we end up selecting to serve as the next county attorney on staff, along with Ms. Bentley, so that there can be enough of a training period and enough of an adjustment period that we really have complete continuity, and we don't have a ball drop that we could avoid by spending a little bit more money to keep someone on, perhaps several months longer than ordinarily might be the course or the routine course of action. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think you touched on some of the points that I was going to mention. I looked at the staff at the county attorney's office, and it looks as though, 2 for, 6 of the 7 attorneys have less than 5 years' experience with Brevard County. So, we will be losing a great deal when we lose a county attorney. And I, too, want to avoid having to get a search firm in order to find someone else. So, I would, whether it's Mr. Visco, Ms. Bentley, I certainly would like to request that she or he bring forward a list of job qualifications, so we're prepared to move forward, as well as some suggestions of places that we can advertise those, that opening, while spending a few hundred dollars instead of spending 20,000 or 30,000 dollars, as we had in the past, whether it's the Florida Association of Counties, whether they have a job posting listing or something like that nature. So, provide us not only with a job qualification list, but with some suggested advertisement spots for that opening. At least try to spend a few hundred dollars and see what we get before we make that big decision to go with a search firm, as we've apparently done in the past.
And I could, just to echo your sentiment with that, I would have an opposition to spending a five-digit number on this. If we can do it for a three-digit number, great, but realistically, it might be a four-digit number, but that, to me, is a lot more palatable than spending tens of thousands.
And that money, I believe, would be better spent, as you mentioned, with the both attorneys working together than with a search firm.
And I did have a conversation with HR and with county finance to make sure that we do have adequate reserves, so that we could have a lengthy transition, and we are in good shape to accomplish that without having to funnel money away from something else that's a necessity at this point. So, it is possible, if we were to opt for option one, to do that without feeling any pain, so to speak. Commissioner Pritchett?
Ms. Bentley, are you getting ready to retire?
Ready to retire yet.
Okay. I think we're really jumping the gun. I think we went through this with Mr. Knox. He gave us about a year's warning. And Ms. Bentley was wonderful, and probably the reason we quit, didn't continue doing what we're doing, because we had it in-house. Same with Frank. I think, one, I think we picked the cheapest search firm, and we shouldn't have done it. There was a better one we probably could have picked. But all saying, oh, we got the best county manager you could have got out of it, and if he would have stepped up, he would have saved us that $10,000, too. But I think we're really jumping the gun here. I don't want to double up legal county attorney costs. These guys are smart when they come in, and my goodness, we're going to have you already anyways. So, I think we're really, yeah, I don't know. I think we're really jumping the gun. Maybe this would be a discussion that we have when she says she's a year out. I would be on board then, but I'm just, I don't feel like we should put staff moving in that direction yet, or set aside funds for it just yet, so.
Okay. Seeing no further lights, I'll, you know, I'll go ahead and just kind of chime in and dovetail from that. I would ordinarily say that that makes a lot of sense, but I think the unique nature of what's contemplated and what's entailed in serving as county attorney, at least insofar as the items that have been brought to my attention from legal at this point, is such that a short transition, even if it may be cheaper on the front end for taxpayers, it may be more expensive in the long run. I do not want anyone to get the impression that the commission, or any of the individual commissioners, are trying to push Ms. Bentley out. I'd love for her to stay on until what was the date listed here. I'd love for her to stay on until, what was the date listed here? November 1st, 2021. But I really do think, given everything that's going on, that it would be wise to act a little earlier than we otherwise might. Commissioner Pritchett?
Just on that note, sir, a lot of times when we start interviewing people for these positions, they've been working in government for a long time, so they typically already have a handle on how to run these types of governments, and you find something compatible, there might even be some city attorneys at that time that are ready to move up, and they're well-trained and versed in it. Again, you just have no idea what will come along. So I, you know, I love that we're prethinking about it, but I really think we're jumping the gun, so.
You know, just the last item, I'll say to avoid it getting too circular with respect to that, is you're spot on with respect to there being possibly some city attorneys that might be able to move up. And again, I'm not saying we should use someone outside. We may be fine going in-house. There are a couple folks in-house, one of whom is not terribly far away from Ms. Bentley at this point, who probably would do an excellent job by all measures and all indications. With that said, there are certain folks, and this is one of those things where you're not going to get 600 applicants where they're really qualified. I'll give you an example. Pete Sweeney used to be deputy city attorney, or I think maybe chief deputy city attorney for Palm Bay, and when Andy Lannan left the office, Pete, I think, took a job somewhere in South Florida, south of here, maybe it was in Indian River County or one of the other areas. And the concern is, you may have other folks that are similarly qualified, and I don't know that he'd even be in the, in a position in his life where he could consider switching over, but you have people that are at different stages of their lives where there may be an opportunity that presents itself earlier, and if we're not in a rush and something's not a good fit, we simply don't act, just because we advertise using perhaps hundreds of dollars, God willing, instead of tens of thousands. If we don't see anything that we like, we're not in a position where we have a gun to our heads and we have to do something immediately. So with respect to the option that was presented to direct HR to bring various proposals forth, there's nothing that says that we have to act on those instantaneously. It's just giving us options. And I do agree, and I would oppose any effort to push Ms. Bentley out any sooner than she wants to leave, which I'm hoping is November 1st, 2021. So I don't want anyone to get the impression that there's some ulterior motive that's being contemplated to get her out by accelerating this. That's not at all the case. But that said, well, we'll see what the direction of the board is. Commissioner Isnardi?
I think the most responsible thing would be to have a succession plan, I mean, without a doubt, and I think that you have to, I like the idea of the job description, you know, because we've, you know, in the recent past have made errors that I'm concerned about, that in government, at least as far as our legal advice goes, shouldn't have happened. So I want to make sure that those areas are covered with whoever does succeed Ms. Bentley, and so I'd like us to at least move forward in that direction. So we're ready.
And I just want to apologize, I just realized, you know, sometimes things don't come out as well as you intend them to. I think I used the word "probably" when I addressed Abby. I apologize for saying that. I take, you know, I certainly take that back, and I didn't mean any offense by that. I've had nothing but good interactions with you, so my apologies for that. So with that, if there is a motion, I would just ask that we clarify which of these options we're selecting, and then make sure that it's sufficiently clear that it can be put down in the minutes appropriately. Either Commissioner Tabia or perhaps Commissioner Isnardi.
Okay, I'll make a motion for option 1, direct human resources staff to bring various proposals for a transition plan to the board, including a job proposal and a list of sites and costs that we could advertise a position for a lower cost.
Perfect. I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Pritchett in the negative.
I'm seeing the negative.
In the non-positive. Is that better? All right. All right, moving right along, J5. With respect to this, before we get into this, I did want to mention that I had a conversation very recently with Mr. Abate, and he told me that the departments that he was aware of that went out and sent cards in any form in bulk that could ever be considered in bulk, that the folks involved in that have already reimbursed the county for those costs or are in the process of reimbursing the county for those costs. So I commend them for having done that or for doing that. I think this is just something that essentially puts us in a better position moving forward. I'm not going to call anyone out by name, so if someone wants to start asking me which departments or which employees, I'm just not going to do that. I don't think that's productive. The goal with this, again, is in keeping with trying to be fiscally conservative and responsible with the funds. So with that, if there's any discussion, I'm happy to have it. Otherwise, if someone wants to make a motion, we can go that way. Commissioner Isnardi?
I'm going to be a little bit selfish and just say it wasn't District 5.
Wasn't me either. All right, with that said, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll second it.
Mr. Lover, this is on greeting cards, but it's not going to be us sending out letters to people.
No, this has nothing to do with letters.
Okay.
No, absolutely not, to be clear. And I'm not, you know, just to put it out there, I'm not in any way trying to stop that or stem that. I don't think there's been any abuse. There's certainly been nothing that's been brought to my attention that I'm remotely concerned about on that front. So no, just greeting cards. All right, so we had a motion, I'll go ahead and second it, to approve J's and Juliet's 5, funding source notification for greeting cards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. We're moving right along, huh? All right, let's see here. J6, which is the letter to FDOT regarding the A1A crossovers. We have a number of public comment cards. I do want to mention, before we have this item introduced, or alternatively, before we get to the public comment, there were some grammatical fixes for some typos that were in the advanced agenda that I've been advised were fixed. So the ones that I'm aware of, I think there was a typo in the word "rapid," and there were a few apostrophes that were misplaced. Nothing horrible, but we're talking about it as it appears on the current, the most recent agenda, so with those grammatical issues having been fixed. So whatever motion may come of this, I just want to make clear that that is the new version that we're all addressing unless someone specifies otherwise. So with that, Commissioner Tabia, since this is your district and your item, let's have you go ahead and present it if you'd like, and then we'll call public comment.
Thank you. I'm not going to talk about the situation. It's extremely sad. However, this is not my district. This happened to be where I grew up, but this would be Commissioner Smith's district, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward, because I read the Florida's Day, and I greatly appreciate Commissioner Smith for his steadfast leadership on this issue. He's constantly been a leader on traffic control issues. His accomplishment with the installation of the traffic light in Viera, just to be one. So, and I did this extremely quickly to get on the agenda, so I apologize for the typos. Other things that I think could be added to this as we move forward certainly would be to CC the cities, that these lights are currently installed or will be installed, as well as obviously the legislative delegation in the House and the Senate. But again, because of sunshine, it precluded me from calling up Commissioner Smith and saying, "Good job on your comments in the paper." I just would like not only the delegation, but the cities to be aware of, this is not necessarily individually a Commissioner Smith priority. This should be a priority of the entire board. So that was the intent of the letter, was to not only bring light to the issue, which Commissioner Smith had done a very good job, but just to say thank you so much for your leadership on this one.
And I'll echo that as well. I certainly saw those comments, and I think that it's good to have someone that cares about it. I apologize for the confusion. I saw District 3 listed on the agenda item, so I apologize for misspeaking with respect to that. But let's, if it works, let's go ahead and do the public comment, just for folks' benefit that are sitting out there. The order that I'm going to call these in, which is the order they were submitted in, Daniel Williman will be first, Megan Nogel, and I apologize for mispronouncing any names. After Megan, we'll have Shawn Campbell, and then we'll have Patricia Hobbie. So Daniel, if you want to come up first?
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
Daniel Williman, I live in Satellite Beach. I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Tabia and Commissioner Smith as well. Thank you for your statements in the paper. This is an issue that needs to be dealt with, and I'm really hoping that it gets dealt with in the appropriate manner. I know that you wrote this letter, Commissioner Tabia, very quickly, and you wanted to get it on this agenda, and I thank you for your dogged persistence there, but I also wanted to make you guys aware that there's a system that's seen successful use elsewhere, Key West, just to name one place, it's called the HAWK system. It stands for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk. And we've been pushing for red lights, you know, to stop traffic. Everybody knows when you see a red ball light above the traffic that it means to stop. And for, gee, going on almost a year now, we've been saying that these crosswalks are dangerous. And when Commissioner Smith, you brought up those red lights, it immediately hit me that I should come here and mention this to you guys, make you aware of the HAWK system. Because if you just happen to replace those flashing yellow lights with flashing red ones, it's still going to be just as confusing. Right now, a lot of people can easily mistake those flashing yellow lights for the lights of a tow truck pulled over on the side of the road. I know they extend across the entire roadway, but say you're in the right-hand lane and you've got a big box truck next to you, you can only see the ones on your right-hand side, and you might easily mistake them. Aside from that, it's just confusing as it is. They're new, nobody really knows what they are. We're a tourist destination. We're going to have a huge hotel built not far from there soon with lots more tourists who don't know what these things are. But everybody knows when you see a red ball light above the traffic, that means to stop. And that's what these HAWK systems are. It's a masked arm that goes out and over traffic with red and yellow lights. It'll flash, it'll illuminate yellow for a period of time, indicating to drivers that they need to be prepared to stop, and then after a few seconds, it'll illuminate red, indicating that they need to stop. And during this whole time, there's a "don't walk" signal for pedestrians. Only after the lights turn red are the pedestrians given a "walk" signal. That's an added measure of safety right there that I think we need. Not only that, but these systems also provide an audible signal for people who have visual impairment, you know, the traditional tick, tick, tick to let you know that it's safe to cross. We don't have that currently with the systems that we have installed, and I'd just like to see that as this letter goes out, it's amended to include a request for these HAWKs. I'm all for, I'm behind all of you guys on this, removal of those lights. They need to get replaced with something better, but I just think that you should include the request for the HAWKs as well, because I consider them something better. Thank you. Available for any questions.
Thank you. All right, seeing no lights, Megan is up next from Satellite Beach. And did I mispronounce your name? Is it Nogel?
It's like ball logo with an X.
All right, perfect.
I'll try and speak as clearly as I can. I have stitches in my mouth from mouth surgery last week.
I'm sorry.
But this seemed important.
I'll give you a few extra seconds. I know the county attorney is probably not going to be happy with me, but I think that's an extenuating circumstance.
My name is Megan Nogel. I live in Satellite Beach, Florida. I'm speaking for my husband, Kyle Nogel, and on behalf of many locals in our community. My husband and I are of the same mind about the crossovers installed on A1A. I have a written signed statement for my husband, who could not be here due to work obligation. Yesterday mid-morning, I decided to take my seven-year-old daughter for a bike ride. We rode up to a repair shop to drop off a piece of equipment, then decided to take A1A northbound back to our house. We crossed the street, pausing the center lane for safety reasons, then continued across the road. There was an intersection without a light to a street directly to our left. We could consider pedestrians, as both my daughter and I got off our bikes to walk across. As I understand the law, we are allowed to cross at intersections without a crosswalk as pedestrians. After crossing, I saw an undercover police car flash its lights as an off-white, gray SUV pulled over and exited an officer that was plainclothed. This officer immediately approached me with an air of superiority. His bulldogishly told me he was not there to scold me as he scolded me. He told me he was there to call me a bad father, which is indeed a backhanded way of calling someone a bad father. His agenda was clear, he was the law, as he was berating me, an older lady crossed at the exact point I did, walked in front of the officer's car and then on her merryway. The officer didn't blink at her, backup wasn't sent to accost her. I noted this to the officer, and the officer asked me if I was a police officer, and told me he was dealing with me right now. His actions were indescribably condescending and rude to younger tweens, and their mother hopped across the same spot before I went to the repair shop approximately 10 minutes before I was harassed on the side of the road. Nothing was said to them. There are surfers, wave checkers, and dog walkers always crossing A1A, and many refused to use these unsafe crossovers that were installed. I couldn't say anything right. I was reduced to "yes, officer," "no, officer" responses, as well as apologies. I just wanted my license back and asked if I could leave. I didn't even want to ask the officer's name, as everything I said seemed to upset him worse. The officer's agenda was to tell me I must use the killer crossovers, and I was to know it and take his verbal abuse without reproach. I even told the officer I felt no matter what I said, he'd take offense and I'd get in more trouble with him. The militaristic authoritarian approach was noted and undeserved. I was visibly upset, and my daughter asked me later why the police officer was yelling at me. My seven-year-old daughter's interaction with this officer has left much to be desired. I spoke with the repair shop personnel. Same officer has been seen doing the same things to individuals crossing A1A. He does it so loud and abrasively, he can be heard across the street over the hum of cars on a four-lane road. This officer has become infamous for his interactions with people in our small town, until I could identify him. His name in my head was Officer Chip due to the huge chip on his shoulder. Even if I was jaywalking, which according to the law, I crossed a street as a pedestrian, had legal ability to do so, I was much rather, I would much rather have a ticket.
I'll give you a couple sentences, but then you've really got to wrap it up.
Okay, so this is basically about the crossovers, or we even spoke to the commander at the police station today, and he said that that officer is, does not need to have a security camera on her, which we asked to find some type of evidence with how we were treated, or feel like we're being bullied to use these crossovers, even if we are teaching our children how to correctly cross a street. Not everywhere in the world has a crossover or a crosswalk, and to teach my seven-year-old child to try to cross a road, I should not be harassed to use them.
I apologize, you had a bad experience, and your husband had a bad experience. Just briefly, and I'm not saying this is going to bring you total resolution to the issue, but you may want to bring it up to the city council when they meet, because our ability to do anything with respect to, is it Satellite Beach that you're from? The Satellite Beach PD, it's very, very limited. Not to stir up trouble, and Dave, if you'll put your pen down for a second, not to stir up trouble, I did have a conversation with one of the individuals, and I'm not going to say whether it was an elected official or a staff member over there regarding a concern that was actually brought to my attention by someone that's sitting in the audience here at this point, and essentially, I was politely told to stay in my own lane. So I don't know how much resolution you're going to have. I have concerns with respect to how certain things have been handled over there, but that said...
If I had more time, I could. It was the other half about the crosswalks. Our issues are the crosswalks.
I apologize, but I just, I can't, I can't give you more than just a couple extra sentences.
I understand.
Which is more than, frankly, I probably should have, but...
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming.
And just as a comment to that, and usually I don't comment when people comment, usually I wait till the end. I don't think anybody should be crossing anywhere there isn't a crosswalk, whether you agree with me or not, or whether it's reality, and this is what people do. I think you're taking large risks crossing the street anywhere where there's not a designated light that is red that gives you permission to cross. I think that you are taking a chance, whether it's right or wrong, or whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, or, like I said, the reality of it all is that at that point, you are making a decision to take that risk. So I would not recommend crossing the street anywhere where you don't have a crosswalk. Just, as a mom, as a, that's just my own personal opinion. I'm just suggesting, I don't condone, obviously, if what you're saying is accurate, and there's an officer out there that's bullying residents, that's terrible. But Satellite Beach has to take care of Satellite Beach PD, because we have zero authority over what they do over there. So staying in your own lane, yeah, we have to, any more than they can come in and tell us the same, so. As you can tell, I'm not a fan of these yellow beacon crossings.
How do you really feel, Commissioner?
Sorry.
It's okay. All right, Mr. Campbell, Shawn Campbell? Ms. Campbell, I apologize. I'm on a roll with putting my foot in my mouth tonight.
It's all right. I always say I'm the son my father never had. So my concern is more the position of where the crosswalk is. I live in Indian Atlantic. I live on Coral Way, and Coral Way is the only through street from A1A to Riverside in our entire neighborhood. And so, just from people that have called, whoever they call, to complain about it, my intent is the safety for now of me as a driver turning into my neighborhood. So the median is so far north that in order for me to turn into my neighborhood, I have to slow down and do a quick merge to miss the median in the speeding lane, the fast lane on A1A. So it's like, it's, I don't know how many feet, too far north, and if there's somebody somebody already there, then I have to go straight and then do a U-turn. So I'm a little bit, and that's the concern of most people in our neighborhood, is that medium is too far north that it doesn't give us a chance to slow down in the fast lane of A1A if we're going northbound to turn into our neighborhood. Several people have almost been slammed in the rear by slowing down, where people, three cars behind, are still going, you know, 45 to 60 mile an hour. So my concern is just if somebody could come out and check the measurements of, maybe the medium needs to be moved several yards south to give us more space in the center to, so we don't have to slow down and make a quick jog on in the speeding lane of A1A. And also, if you use that medium and you cross over, the beach access is further north, so you still have to walk down the side of A1A to get to the beach access. We don't have any sidewalks. They're building a condo there, so I don't know if sidewalks are going to be, you know, if that's something they're going to be adding. So I just, my concern is just to have, if somebody could come out and check the position of that specific median.
It's, it's something you may also want to bring up to TPO, which is our transportation planning organization. They're technically autonomous from the county.
Okay.
They are in the government center here. They're a building adjacent to us. Georgiana Gillette is the executive director there, but really, anyone over there can help with respect to that. You may want to talk with them, because I believe the stretch that you're talking about is, is totally an FDOT stretch, where FDOT would be maintaining it. Is that, is that your understanding as well, Commissioner Smith?
I believe so.
Okay, so it's, it's something where I, I can tell you, I've had concerns of a similar nature expressed by constituents in my district. I will give you the heads up, good, bad, or indifferent. The reality on the ground typically is that if there hasn't been a series of accidents at that particular intersection, I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, and I'm not saying not to try, I would still try.
Yeah.
But they look at the, the trash, the crash statistics, and if they don't support, if they don't support essentially that there is a, an ongoing problem, even if there are many close calls, it may not be enough. I've even had constituents tell me they have video, front and back of their car, where people are almost slamming into them continuously, and if they miss by a millimeter, it may not be enough for FDOT. I'm not saying it's right, I'm not saying it's wrong.
Which is such a shame, because it's, you're waiting for more people to die.
Right.
And we're in a neighborhood that there are so many young families and young children, and it's just a concern.
But I would, my, my advice to you, and I'll, I'll see the Florida commissioner as Nardi, I would definitely go to TPO.
Okay.
And see if they can put a request into FDOT. If it comes up, I serve on TPO, actually, I believe we all serve on TPO, do we not?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm certainly going to be supportive of the request to have them evaluate it. What they determine in their evaluation, though, is, is out of our hands, but...
Okay.
You know, I would, I would support it. Commissioner Nardi?
Yeah, and it sounds like that area, there's a specific problem with that median, so that may be something that may be an easy fix. We may not be able to solve all of them.
Right.
But the safety one, obviously, is the most important. So I have somebody here from my office, if you could just give them your phone number, and, you know, we can follow up with you. I mean, obviously, everybody will know what we're doing, but that way specifically, since this is your neighborhood, we can go, I have two staffers that live in Indian Atlantic too as well.
Oh, okay.
So they're very familiar with the area, but...
And we don't have poles up or anything like that, just the mediums. I don't know if there's, I know several people in the neighborhood have, you know, called and complained, and, yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, so if you could just give that gentleman in the back your information. I have your address, but I don't have your phone number.
Okay. Thank you.
The sketchy guy in the jacket back there.
Okay, thank you.
Sketchy.
No, I'm just kidding, sorry, Vic. All right, and then last up, we have Patricia Hobby in the same city, Indian Atlantic. The one prior. Last but not least.
Patricia Hobby, I live at 2025 North Shannon Avenue, and my concern is a couple of things with our neighborhood. We have the Indian Atlantic Elementary and Hoover Junior High School and First Baptist Church, so both of those streets, Flug and Boskine, those exit our neighborhoods. So our neighborhood is a cut-through. We have Health First there now, we have Dunkin' Donuts, so there's quite a bit of traffic coming in and out of those two exits. Where they place the medians, the crosswalks, it gives us no landing spot for turning out of this neighborhood, no matter if you go to the Flug or the Boskine. Flug is a little bit better, you might be able to land in the middle lane, but the one on Boskine, you cannot, you have no turning room out onto A1A. So my concern is, that's one of my concerns. The other concern is where have they placed the crosswalks? Their, the crosswalks, from what I understand, were placed here for us to get to beach accesses. Okay, the crosswalks are not placed directly across from the beach access, so I'll speak of the mobile one on Boskine. You walk across the street, and they have put a, the landing, you know, the two-by-four, but they built this long strip of sidewalk that's going south, and the, the beach access is north. So I'm, I'm trying to make sense of why they made the sidewalk with the metal railing going to a private driveway of a home, that's a private home. They didn't make it to that, to the beach access. And the one at Flug is you walk across, and it, this one particularly just has the three-by-three or two-by-two landing piece of cement, but you will have to come off of the grass to come on the A1A to walk to the beach access to get to it. So the, the safety concern of those two that I'm just speaking of, I drove A1A, and I looked at the majority of them, and I, two, two out of nine are actually directly to your beach access. Some of them land in front of a condominium, you would have to walk down. I'm thinking of myself, when my children were young, we were dragging wagons and fishing poles and boogie boards, and you want to get directly across the highway as quickly as possible. But these two particular ones that exit my neighborhood, they're not going directly to the beach accesses. And the other thing is, with, with other people I have spoken about the yellow flashing lights, we're all taught that yellow is caution, and these HAWK systems that the first gentleman spoke of, I think would be a great solution. I know it costs a little bit more money for the county, but we could save a lot of lives if we put these HAWK systems where the lights blink and gives it time for us to hesitate, and then the red light comes and we stop. That's what we were all taught as drivers. I'm guilty of it, because, I'm done.
If you have just a sentence or two, I'll, I...
I'm, I'm guilty of this yellow flashing, because when they first installed the one in Melbourne on 192, I was picked my mother-in-law up and was driving, and, and she started yelling at me, and I'm like, what, why are you yelling? She's like, the lights are blinking, you need to stop. I said, well, what is this whole system? So we weren't educated. I don't believe that there was an education that was brought to us before these were installed.
Yeah, one, one of the things that was brought to my attention, oh, actually, you know what? I see some lights here. I'm going to pause that. Commissioner Nardi? Is that old?
I think it's an old light, but you're in Indian Atlantic, so make sure you give our information to Vic in the back, okay?
Okay.
So we can follow up with you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll call on you first, and then same with Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I want to, I want to broaden the, the subject matter.
Okay, well, just real, real briefly with respect to this, I can tell you, one of the things that came up, I believe at TPO, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there was some information that suggested that when you put certain traffic, I shouldn't say traffic control devices, but certain indicator devices out on the roadways, whether it be something that flashes, something that lights up, that it's, it's tremendously effective in the short term for those that, that are not used to seeing it, and who see it for the first or maybe the subsequent time. And the effectiveness decreases, because people become essentially desensitized to it if they're used to driving by it several times a day, or at least daily. The question I have, though, is if it still may be worthwhile to look at, at potentially changing that out, given the fact that you're dealing in an area where there are a ton of tourists, and it's going to be brand-new for all of them essentially all the time. I, I don't know what the crash data supports in terms of how many folks were local versus how many folks were visiting, but it's, it's something to consider, because I think that point may be brought up in the scope of this going through DOT. But certainly, I agree that we have to do something with respect to it, because the, the status quo is just not acceptable. But I, I appreciate you coming out. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Pritchett, and then Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, a couple of, of thoughts. It's an FDOT road, so it's really hard for us to do a lot other than make recommendations. And on that, I, I think Commissioner Smith, if you go ahead before the TPO board and try to make some changes, you know, you're going to have the TPO support on that. Here's a, I was thinking about this, there's not one driver that wants to hit a pedestrian. And I, in our, our town, they put up some of those yellow flashy things. I just don't see them, and I can't tell you how many times I've run through them, because my eye just doesn't catch it. Especially when you've got fast traffic going on a road, there's just no way that that's going to do what we need to do. It's just not going to cut at these little flashy yellow lights we've put in. And I mean, and I don't want to hit anybody, but my head just doesn't grab the information. I really like your idea of the HAWK traffic light. I was going to recommend we send, at the bottom of this letter, that we go ahead and request a traffic light installed, and maybe start with a couple rows, they can start looking at them, but I think those HAWK lights are a good idea. We just got back from over in Clearwater, and they have them everywhere for protesting pedestrian crossing. And you stop, because you're right, it's right in front of you. So I, I, that's what I, I'm going to ask that we add that to the letter, and Commissioner Loeb, when we're ready, I want to go ahead and request we approve this letter with the addition of that we just ask the FDOT if they would look at maybe putting in a HAWK traffic light, and we could start with this corner here of A1A and Elwood Avenue, maybe they could do an analysis on A1A. So thank you, sir, for that suggestion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and treat that as a motion. Commissioner Smith, you're next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to start with a video, and the video, the initial video shows an interview that I did with Channel 2 News last week. And if you'll notice, as that, as this continues, they actually had their camera in their truck when they approached the flashing yellow lights, and the three cars in front of them didn't slow down, didn't stop. They didn't slow down and didn't stop. So it's very, very telling. So, and then we're going to follow that up with a demonstration of the HAWK system.
Perfect. Roll the video, please.
When you press this button here, lights over there, they turn yellow to let cars passing by know that a pedestrian is getting into the crosswalk. Now, the commissioner and others that we spoke to, they want to see red lights put up there to prevent something like this from happening again.
There's a car accident on A1A.
I'm transferring you to the ambulance, stand in line, okay?
Someone hit by a car.
911 calls from the 22nd detailed the frantic moments at Elwood and A1A. The Brevard County Commissioner Kurt Smith is hoping it won't happen again.
You see a yellow light followed by a red light, what do you do? You don't keep driving, you stop. Well, that makes sense. Just a flashing yellow light and expecting drivers to stop without education, to me, is an extremely poor idea.
Among the busy highway, you'll find some quickly moving cars and the blue ribbons made by those at a nearby VFW marking the area of a crosswalk in use by 12-year-old Sophia Nelson when she was hit by a vehicle. Smith hoping change can happen here.
I did some investigation, and Florida Department of Transportation instituted this, and I said right then, this is the stupidest thing I've ever seen, because kids are going to die. Kids are going to get deceived into thinking that with a false sense of security, I can push this button and I can safely walk across the street.
Marilyn Paulson, who lives in the area, agrees that the safety features as they stand are not enough.
A little girl near Christmas dying. The whole thing is a nightmare, and if people don't understand what that means, it's got to change, or take them down.
Commissioner Smith says that he will bring this topic up in the next commissioners' meeting. His ultimate hope is that his call for change will move agencies like FDOT to take further action. Reporting in Satellite Beach, Paul Rivera, Washington News.
So did you all notice the flashing yellow lights as the cars were, you noticed one car did hit their brake briefly, but they just kept going. All three cars did, including the, the news truck. So do we have the second video?
The HAWK signal is a high-intensity activated crosswalk, also known as a pedestrian hybrid beacon. Drivers will see all indication lights are dark when there is no pedestrian waiting to cross, and the pedestrian signal will maintain a "don't walk" signal. Pedestrians who want to cross the street will need to push the button to activate the system. Drivers will see a flashing yellow light for a few seconds when pedestrians push the button. Drivers should reduce speed and prepare to stop. Pedestrians will see the "don't walk" signal and should wait. Drivers will see the flashing, go to a steady yellow light, warning them the indication will soon turn to a red light. Pedestrians continue to see the "don't walk" symbol and should remain waiting. Drivers will see a steady red light, which requires them to stop at the stop line. Pedestrians will then see a "walk" symbol to cross, and should look in both directions to make sure the vehicles are all stopped. Drivers will see alternating flashing red lights as pedestrians cross the street. During this period, drivers are required to stop, and then they may proceed with caution if crosswalk is clear. Pedestrians will see the "walk" indication change to a flashing countdown that indicates how much time they have remaining to cross the street. Drivers will see all lights are back to dark at the end of the flashing countdown, and may continue to proceed through the crosswalk if it is clear. Pedestrians will see the "don't walk" symbol and must push the button to activate the system again. No regrets when you drive with care. Throat down, eyes up, buckle up.
Okay, so I think we can all agree that that system would be far superior to the yellow flashing lights, that nobody knows what they are. My first encounter with these things was back in about October 2017. I was traveling east on Post Road, and right by Sherwood Elementary School, these flashing yellow lights were going on. And as the lady that was up here before, your brain can't comprehend what that is. I've never seen them before. And fortunately, I was far enough away that these kids started walking across the street, so obviously, I stopped. Well, I called county staff to find out what this thing was, and they informed me that that was a city road. So I called Mayor Meehan, she checked into it, and she said it was an FDOT deal, and she didn't know anything about it. So I thought, this is really dumb, because what, what are we accomplishing here? This is negative improvement, from my estimation. Well, two months later, a little boy was killed there. So fast forward to, that was December 17, he was killed. So fast forward to December 19, and we have a similar situation occurring in Satellite Beach. So this isn't just a Satellite Beach issue. This is for us, a county-wide issue, and it's actually a statewide issue. Sheriff Rick Ramsey from Monroe County, which Key Largo, Key West Marathon, he fought FDOT back in 2016. So this has been going on for a long time, because they had installed yellow flashing lights in Key Largo, and they had several incidents there. And he finally got his red HAWK system there. And Sarasota, they've done the same thing, they have HAWK systems all over. Somebody mentioned they were in Clearwater recently, they have them. So this isn't just a Satellite Beach issue, even though obviously, they've discovered firsthand how terrible this can be. So I reached out to Senator Mayfield, and we joined a conference call with a couple of the city leaders from Satellite Beach last week, and FDOT. And FDOT was very, very cordial, friendly, but we couldn't pin them down for any action. And the point being that they did years of study on this road, A1A, before they even started construction. And they initially installed those crosswalks with no lights, nothing. So the city leaders in Satellite Beach said, we need some kind of lights, so they got the yellow lights. They didn't want them, but that's what they were given. They, in fact, requested these HAWK systems three years ago, and they were told, well, your road doesn't qualify. I don't know what qualifies, but it seems silly to me. So my impression is that they kept telling us, when Debbie and I, Senator Mayfield and I kept trying to press them, well, when can we see a reduction in the speed limit? When can we see these lights replaced with red HAWK system? Well, all options are on the table. That was the continued response that we got every time we tried to pin them down. All options are on the table. What does that mean? Does that mean we are going to look at this and look at it in three months, three years? We'll get back to you. to look at this and look at it in three months, three years, we'll get back to you? So, my thinking is, and my gut is, that we're going to have to push some buttons in Tallahassee. My first thought is through the legislature, which would be the senators in the House of Representatives. Commissioner Tobias certainly knows people in the legislature, so that would help. And we need to reach out to the governor, because he can tell them what makes sense. And I think if we appeal to him, he's got a young child. If we can appeal to him as a parent, as well as a governor, I think that we could get something done sooner rather than later. So, with regard to this letter, that would be my request, that we include some, well, one letter, I would like to request another letter be written as well to Ron Book, our lobbyist in Tallahassee, and ask him to intercede on our part if he could visit with the governor and pass this information along for us. And I would love to sit down with Eden and compose that letter and bring it back to you guys. And if it's approved, then we can send it off. So, that's, that's the deal. It's, it's, it's a tragedy waiting to happen. I feel terrible for these people that have suffered the loss. They're, they're dealing with an emotional scarring that probably will never heal. And not only the people that lost the little girl, but the woman that hit her. I mean, she's going to have to live with that as well. So, that would be my request and my recommendation to, to my fellow commissioners.
Okay, so are we, are we clear as to the actual motion? Commissioner Smith, let's, let's go ahead and have you restate it just for the benefit of the clerks.
I would like to make a motion.
Oh, I apologize. Commissioner?
It doesn't matter. Do you want to just merge the two?
Let's, as long as there's clarity as to who made the motion, I'm happy to do it any way you all want.
I made a motion for this with the...
Oh, that's right. I apologize.
I didn't agree with him, but he wants to send another letter to Mr. ...
Right. I would like to include my information in this letter, and then I would like to compose a second letter to Mr. Book.
So why don't we do it this way, just for clarity's sake? So, we'll, we'll deal with your motion, as it was first phrased, to approve this letter with the addendum at the bottom with respect to adding this system. I'll go ahead and second it, just for clarity. All in favor, or before we do that, do we all know what we're voting on at this point?
Yeah.
We're good? Okay. So, all in favor as to that? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, perfect. Passes 5-0 unanimously. Now, Commissioner Smith, your motion?
My motion would include writing a letter from the commission to Ron Book, our lobbyist, and requesting him to reach out and intercede on our behalf to the governor to expedite reducing the speed limit on A-1A in the Atlantic, Indian Harbor Beach, Satellite Beach. Those city councils have also voted to reduce the, the speed limit. And to intercede on our behalf in replacing the yellow flashing lights with the HAWK system.
In all four cities, correct?
Yes.
If you have the floor, if you'd like, Commissioner Zardini?
I would just say, can we write that letter directly to the governor as well? Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
I mean, I know you suggested having...
He could deliver it. Ron Book can deliver it.
Of course, but coming from us might be impactful as well. I mean, we can have him work on our behalf. That was actually going to be some of my comments, was can we be sure to include the entire beach? Because I'm in agreeance with you. I think the intent was pure. You know, you had, most of these crosswalks came about because residents needed access to the beach and they wanted somewhere safely to cross. So, the intent was, was pure. However, you know, the plan doesn't always work out, you know, in the best interest. I think those yellow flashing lights are absurd. I think, you know, obviously, it gives people a false sense of security. And again, I think, was it Patricia Hobby that said, yeah, I mean, absolutely, yellow means proceed with caution. It does in front of our fire stations. It does, you know, when, when you're, when you see a flashing light, when you, when you're going to make a left hand out on a green that has a yellow flashing beforehand.
Well, and you saw it on the video. You saw all those cars just proceed, the flashing lights.
You can't even see those yellow lights.
And the other complaint that I've had regarding those flashing lights, people say that when they approach them and it's dark, they actually blind the driver, so you can't see anyone on the crosswalk.
Because I think it's great. Crosswalks are a necessary thing, because people are going to cross, whether they should or they shouldn't, or whether it's safe to do so. You know, I think maybe, maybe the happy median is if they can only afford to put so many of those HAWK systems in, or if that's their gripe, we reduce the number. And we just don't have those other crosswalks, those other areas. But I think, again, I would be fully in support of a true and actual legitimate crosswalk, but that would be the only way I would support any kind of crossing.
So, your motion that I'll take it, is having been amended to include the suggestions we've heard, to include the governor?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't normally do this, but I would like to amend Commissioner Smith's motion. He, he mentioned bringing it back to the board. I think this is a point of expediency. I would like to give authority to you, the chair, to sign on behalf, so we can get that done sooner than, than later.
Is that acceptable? We'll modify your motion accordingly.
Absolutely.
All right.
All right. I'll go ahead and second it, just to get it going. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, perfect. Passed 5-0 unanimously. Thank you all. And thank you, everyone who came to speak on this item.
Thanks.
And I'll work with staff to make sure that gets autographed as soon as it's available.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, we've addressed J. Is and Juliet 7, the opioid litigation on the front end of the meeting, public comment. We don't have any further cards. Board reports, Mr. Abate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
I just have one request for clarification on J. 3, your BCC policy and AO on public records. Do you want me to make the revisions per the agenda item and present it to the board, to the chair for execution, or do you want me to bring it back under consent with the revisions?
I would think we can execute it at this point unless someone has an objection. I'm fine with it either way, though.
I'm good.
Commissioner Tobias?
Yeah, I voted against it, but would be amenable to with you signing it as it is.
Perfect. That's the way we'll, we'll treat it then.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Where are we? Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. Just something to consider. We've been getting a couple of outlandish public records requests lately. And some of those, I asked Ms. Bentley about it. I think when the public records item was put in at the state of Florida, that the intent in that was wonderful, but there's some abuse of it, too. And I think there was some unattended consequences that came with it. Thank goodness, I talked to Ms. Bentley, that we don't have to tell them where we put our money at and what bank. I mean, it's, it's just getting so abusive. And, you know, I don't know about you guys, when I did this, I understand the role of it. People know what we're doing as far as government business, but it's none of their business for them to know how old my spouse is.
Commissioner Pritchett, I apologize for interjecting, but if, if you'd perhaps considered having the conversation separately with Ms. Bentley, I'm just concerned...
No, I want to talk about this right now, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
But, so my thought is, is a commission, and I've already talked to some of my representatives about maybe making some changes at the Florida level. And Commissioner Tobias, you said one time, when they do this, the things that don't have a lot of cost are a little bit easier for conversation. But I'm thinking, if nothing else, and of course, some of that, I, I think if at least someone had to be a citizen of the United States to make a public records request, I think that's a reasonable request. Because right now, you don't know who's requesting these things and why they're requesting them. Maybe it's more of a woman thing, but it's, we just grew up with, with learning some comfort things of people not knowing our, our patterns and routines. It's just, it's just not appropriate. But some of these requests coming through, and we can say no to them. But I know, Commissioner Zardini, you deal with the health thing, and you guys have strong HIPAA laws.
Right.
So, it's nobody's business and what health insurance you guys are taking and why either.
Or which bank our direct deposit goes into?
Yeah. So, I, I think some of these things are just, and Ms. Bentley said some of these things are very abstract for, I can't get a better word on that. So, I think some of these things, we might have to be ready if it comes up, because it's just people just doing some things that maybe we might need to take it on legally. I don't know. But I would just request that we maybe reach out to our representatives and see if they would at least maybe consider that putting into Florida law that someone would have to be a citizen of the United States before they can make a public records request. I think, I think we're helping a lot of bad people get a lot of information that they shouldn't get if they're not a citizen. So, that's just my request to you guys to think through that.
You know, I'll just put this out there succinctly as I can. I think the request that's being referenced, because I was copied on it as well, was from a Russian mail server, of all things. And it was a rather in-depth request, where I don't know that the information sought was really being sought for anything that anyone would consider a proper reason. It seemed to be information that perhaps could be used to assist someone committing identity theft. I don't care why anyone wants information. If they're entitled to it, I will always give it to them. If there's a question, I will always give it to them. But when you start asking things along the nature of what was identified with respect to where someone's depositing their paycheck, I don't know that that's in the public's interest to have that information out there. And I don't know that that's what anyone contemplated in Tallahassee when they, they passed the laws pertaining the public record. I don't necessarily have a firm opinion, one way or the other, as to having to be a US citizen. I don't have a problem treating US citizens differently in certain respects, where it's appropriate within the confines of the law. I don't know whether that's something that would be challenged, and more importantly, whether if it's challenged, it would be successfully challenged. But, you know, I do share the concerns with respect to some of these very specific and peculiar requests that we've gotten. But I do want to clarify that the item that was on earlier, dealing with public records request, the, the request that's being referenced, I don't even think we received it at that point in time when I put that onto the agenda. So, it's not only that it didn't have any part to play in that agenda item, it couldn't have, because we didn't even receive it at the, at that point in time when it was added to the agenda. So, anything further, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to pass on myself for now. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wish I had better news, but I'm just passing along information from Amy Baker. She's the head of the Office of Economic and Demographic Research. She's pretty spot-on, having worked with the state for quite some time. Anyway, yesterday, she said property tax rates would face, near-term, her words, intense slowdown. So, as we move forward and make policy decisions, she points out that tax revenue through sales tax will continue to increase, but ad valorem revenue is going to slow down at the end of 2020 and be flat by 2021. So, we have some tough decisions as we move forward with not more money, but potentially about the same revenue. We can't expect, you know, a bump that we've had in the past. She highlights mainly new construction statewide, that, that their forecasting will not continue to, to grow. So, just an unfortunate warning we have to look forward to as we make policy decisions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, sir. No report.
Commissioner Zardini?
Yes, and I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Denihoff. Mr. Abate, is it okay if I address Mr. Denihoff?
Sure.
Okay. I have a question regarding the intersection at Babcock and the permits regarding the parkway hookup. Can you tell me why the county hasn't issued permits yet? Because there seems to be a different story than what's, than what the city of Palm Bay or some of its representatives are telling the public about the county's role in this. And I just wanted you to get a good clarification. Again, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I probably should have warned you. I was going to ask you this before the meeting, but I think there needs to be some clarity, other than from another elected official, on what's occurring with that intersection and where, where at.
Well, as you're aware, in the last several months, we, well, much longer than that, really, we've been attempting to work with the city of Palm Bay staff to arrive at a plan, construction plan for the intersection improvements for this new intersection on Babcock Street. The, we eventually arrived at a plan that we felt was acceptable. We had discussed permitting conditions, which would be associated with that plan extensively. And they were predicated on the idea that we were going to have an interlocal agreement with the city that would spell out a number of conditions that the city would commit to. As it turns out, the city did not consider or make any subsequent suggested modifications to a draft local, interlocal agreement. And so, we attempted to come up with conditions for a permit that would just go on the face of the permit. And their response to that, staff's response to that, was essentially to provide us with a letter. I can't recall the exact date. I believe it was the 10th of December. And the, on that, in that letter, essentially, they rejected the, the conditions and did not accept those conditions. So, two days later, I sent them a letter, which indicated that we were denying the permit because they weren't complying with those conditions. To be very clear, those conditions were the same conditions that we had spelled out for months and months and months that we had discussed with city staff.
And they had no problem with those conditions before, correct?
They didn't indicate any problems with them up to that point in time, with the exception that they weren't real keen on the idea of, of committing impact fees towards the...
Or taking over the, the ownership or the maintenance of the intersection, which is what every other city has done, considering it is the city's impact to the, to that road and the need for that improved intersection because of that development.
Yeah. The staff had, had not expressed any objections to that. But when council considered it the day before or the night before, that the commission was to consider the one and a half million dollars and the options on what to do with that one and a half, the council did indicate that they were had concerns about it, and they decided to wait to see what the commission was going to do on the following day. And then, you know, after that, a couple of weeks after that, is when we got our letter regarding the permit conditions.
And I appreciate that. And again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot without at least a heads up, but I wanted it on the record, and I wanted it heard from staff, from somebody who's been here. How many years have you worked for the county, Mr. Denihoff?
Twenty-three.
Okay, sorry.
You really put him on the spot there.
I really did. But I, I wanted an unbiased, non-politician opinion, because, you know, I feel like I'm battling the narrative that the city of Palm Bay is, is releasing, because people are upset, because that interchange is there and it's closed. And they're, they're saying, well, if the, if the county would release the permit. And that's really not, not correct. And that's, that's misinformation. And as far as I understood, or at least I was told, is that the, the intersection is inadequate, at least what they had last provided, correct?
The...
Because it has to be safe. The intersection has to be safe.
Yes. The, the proposed initial construction on their part would have a under-capacity condition that would exist with it on the very first day that it opens. And they hadn't committed to building the full version of the plan. And quite frankly, as we understand it at this point in time, they do not have the funds available to be able to build it.
And that's what I was told by a council member, but, and if it's a public safety issue, I mean, that's what we just dealt with for an hour earlier. I mean, if it's, if the county was to release a permit for an unsafe build of an intersection, the county's the one that's going to be liable as well. Never mind that it's reckless and dangerous. I think that we're doing the right thing. We're not being stubborn. You know, if we were being stubborn, we would have pulled the money from that intersection a long time ago. It's just, it's very frustrating to me, being the person in District 5, getting, you know, the little shots across the bow, well, the county won't release the permit, when that is actually not true. I mean, we won't release the permit only because of safety issues.
The, one of the conditions, or one of the concerns that we as staff have is that the city, once the road is there, the city will be able to issue permits, or what are called development orders, which will drive the capacity, the current capacity situation on Babcock from currently acceptable to unacceptable, in other words, deficient, and without a commitment on their part to either control those development orders or to participate in the solution, which would be the widening in the future for Babcock, then we've got a major concern. And once we issue this...
And you say that so much more eloquently than I would, because I'm angry about it. Because it's irresponsible growth. I mean, people, Babcock is bad enough, and we're trying, what are we doing, three and a half miles south of, yeah. So, I mean, we're, we're doing our best on our end, but you, you can't overload the road.
The thing, one last item on this, and to all the commissioners and anyone else, this is not a new situation. We have been dealing with this situation, I think, at the last board meeting, I said, perhaps for 10 years. It's, it's pretty close to that.
Yeah.
And the, I have been asked dozens of times through meetings, telephone calls, with a variety of people, developers, city staff, council members, what was to be expected from the county. And I have been very, very consistent about it. And further, so you are aware, I advised them repeatedly that if we couldn't reach an agreement in a reasonable amount of time, that we might find the million and a half dollars be reallocated or allocated to a different purpose than this.
Well, because the million and a half, again, just to, just to go back a little bit for anybody that is hearing this for the first time, but the million and a half was originally allocated by Commissioner Anderson. And it's about a little, maybe five years ago, roughly, give or take six months to a year. And that money sat there, and it's been sitting there for that long. And the county didn't wait to the last minute to... That intersection initially was going to be paid for 100% by the developer. Then the developer was going to pay a third of that intersection. And then, then the city said they don't have the money. It's at least my last conversation with council... they don't have the money, is at least my last conversation with Councilman Santiago. He didn't know where he was going to get the money from, from the intersection. So I've been here almost three years, and there's been no movement on it, but it's not because of the county's fault. It's not because the county hasn't tried to come up with an interlocal. It's because, it's because we couldn't come to an agreement, and that money is wasted money sitting there. So that's why we're doing three and a half miles on Babcock, correct?
Yes, they worked last night. I think they completed the first step for one lane, and I believe tonight they'll be doing the other lane.
But the information before that was correct, right?
That is correct.
All right. I just want, just want you to back me up, only because I, again, I'm the politician, you're the expert, so, or at least you're the one that's been here long enough to know the history. All right, thank you, Mr. Denihoff. Thank you, Mr. Abate.
That's all you've got?
That's it for now.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to finish up by going back to Allison Lima for me. I just wanted to give folks up here a heads up for something that will probably be on the very next commission agenda. I talked to our dear sheriff about putting together a three or four, maybe five-hour public safety summit, either here or somewhere near here, where we'd have BCSO, including animal services, fire rescue, including ocean rescue, and I'd like to see mosquito control, and possibly, if they want to be involved, DOH, Department of Health, basically just have a short opportunity for each of them to present on their particular operations and answer some questions that I think come up frequently that a lot of folks just don't know the answers to. The one that is kind of a recurring one, and I've heard the answer, and it makes a lot more sense than most people might think, but why do we have county fire rescue sending out fire trucks on medical calls? So things like that, that I think a lot of people wonder. If we put together just a few hours, even three, four, five hours tops, an opportunity to have these different departments, or excuse me, offices present, I think we could clear up a lot of misconceptions and educate the public in a way that they might not otherwise get. I don't think this is something that's going to require a ton of planning, since it's not terribly in-depth, and it's not terribly time-intensive. So I'll work with staff, but I'm probably going to propose shooting for the very end of March or the very beginning of April to try to get this accomplished, unless there's something in one of the offices that would otherwise preclude that. So keep a lookout for the next agenda, that's where you'll see it. And then, last but not least, for our friends over on this side from the clerk's office, if there's ever anything that's ambiguous with the motions, because I know we were kind of getting unruly over here today, feel free to jump in. I mean, if you need to just jump in in the middle because we're moving past and there's something totally unclear that we've done, just let me know. I don't take any offense whatsoever to it. In fact, I'd rather we all be on the same page. But thank you all so much, appreciate it. With that, 7:12, we'll get it adjourned at 7:12. Thank you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.